Good evening and welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education's Work Session and Business Meeting combined tonight for Tuesday, November the 1st, 2022. I will call the meeting to order and ask for a motion to adopt the agenda for the November 1st, 2022 Business Meeting Agenda as presented.
Send me a second.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, a second by Ms. Carpenter. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously. So, Board members, the first part of this meeting, first I'll say welcome to our viewing audience that has joined us live stream and for those that you are, that are here with us in person. This meeting has been called prior to our regular scheduled six o'clock meeting because of some Board members' concerns over a discussion that probably didn't quite get finished at our last meeting regarding Vice Chair Blackwell. So, some other comments have been made that they would like to have a continued discussion and let the Board members decide what they would like to do from there. So, I'm going to try to keep this in a controlled environment tonight, so I'm just going to start with Board member comments and I'll begin with Ms. Adcock.
Thank you, Ms. Grimsley. It came to our knowledge about some posts that Ms. Blackwell had put on Facebook concerning the Scholastic book vendor that we use. And according to Facebook, she had responded to a parent that was talking about books that were in one of our schools and the parent was talking about their concern over the inappropriateness of the books. And Ms. Blackwell said that she agreed that this was why Scholastic has been notified, "We will no longer be using them as a vendor since they cannot be trusted. This mess has to be called out and stopped." And so, with that being said, I would just like to make a motion to the rest of the Board to censure Ms. Blackwell.
Ms. Carpenter?
And to my, it is my understanding, and I just want this verified because it's my understanding, that you had verified this information to be correct and this is why no action was taken prior to this. And that was why you didn't want to do anything before this, you wanted to make sure verification was done this.
Let me, let me stop you right there. Number one, I did not not do anything. I just said at the end of the meeting, the speaker that was speaking, "We needed to verify that information." Now, the Board could have taken action prior to that if they had chosen to. I don't take action for the Board. But the reason I didn't acknowledge your comments or what was being done over there is because that did have to be verified. Right, now you can continue.
Yeah, and that's, that's why I wanted verification for our attorney, because our attorney had just made a comment for our Board not having, all the Board not having information, because he had just made a comment about prior knowledge on Keisha's situation. She had done similar type thing and, and that was a problem. And here we get same type information and our Board did not have knowledge any of this type stuff on this, the same type information. Our Board had not voted on anything like this. We didn't have any kind of information on this. We'd never voted on this, so this was all new to us. And so, again, I wanted information on this.
All right, thank you. Mr. Burr?
I respect the other two Board members' opinions. Without a doubt, we all, we all get a vote and whatever happens, happens. And, you know, I made the comment, I think it was a month ago, that I would like for this Board to get away from this and quit bringing so much attention to ourselves and get on with the business at hand with the students and the teachers. So, that's the only comment I make. I'm just, I'm over all of this stuff.
Mr. Walter?
Okay, I didn't see the post, but is that, was it on your personal page? Is it on your campaign? It's on the Cabarrus County Schools web, Facebook page? What was, where was it?
Do you want to answer that?
Honestly, I, okay, I believe that I might have, I can't remember if I did it as on my candidate page or if I did it on my personal page.
But either, either one, they, they belong to you personally?
Yeah, it belonged to me personally.
Not the school system?
Correct. I mean, it was my, it was my statement.
Now, has it been deleted? Is it, where, what is the status?
I don't even remember where it's at, so I don't know that it's been deleted or not. This has been since September the 14th.
I mean, obviously, we want to put out accurate information if it's possible and want to clarify something if it's not, not accurate, but...
So, according to the conversations that I had had with, once that material was discovered at Mount Pleasant Middle School during the book fair, it was brought to my attention by the parent that the principal had contacted Scholastic to let them know that should this, you know, if they cannot be trusted to keep this material out of our school system, then they would no longer be doing business with them. That was specific information that was given from the principal to the parent.
From your perspective, is this hearsay or, you know, could it have?
Well, and I talked to, I talked to the mother and that was what she told me.
From the parent, okay. Again, I think our, our goal here would be to make sure that we're presenting accurate information. But it is on your personal, personal page and I think that does make a difference.
Ms. Sandage?
I've said all the comments I need to make on this topic. If there is a vote, I'll vote on it, but I don't have any further comments from those I've already given to this Board and to the public.
Okay, Board members, there will need to be a motion on the floor for this to move forward.
I think Denise already made a motion.
Did you get a second? Okay, so let's back up for just a minute. So, I did have Mr. White draft a censure, some verbiage. Would y'all like to hear it? Do you want to be, I mean, I want to feel like the majority of the Board wants to move forward with that before I...
You need a second before you should do that.
Carolyn, just a second. All right, would y'all like to hear it? Do you want to hear the, okay. This side, I've heard this side. Do y'all want, are you ready?
I'm ready to vote.
Okay. Whereas the Cabarrus County School Board policy is the governing authority on the Cabarrus County School Board and its members. Whereas the Cabarrus County School Board Policy Code 2120 Ethics for School Board Members provides that all Board members and the performance of their official duties have the need to: A) uphold the integrity and independence of the Board members' office; B) avoid impropriety in the exercise of the Board's and the Board's members' official duties; C) avoid being placed in a position of conflict of interest and refrain from using the Board members' position on the Board for personal or partisan gain; and D) take no private action that will compromise the Board or administration. Whereas the Cabarrus County School Board Policy Code 2220 Official School Spokesperson provides that: A) Any person speaking in an official capacity will conduct his or her assignment from the standpoint of the best interest of the Board, the school district, and the community, not as a representative of his or her own personal ideas or feelings; and B) School employees who are called on to speak in their official capacities as employees of the school system shall communicate the position of the school board when asked to comment on legislative policy or political issues. Whereas Laura Blackwell, a member of the Cabarrus County School Board, made comments and representation and violation of the above-mentioned policies when Ms. Blackwell responded to a post on her political Facebook page about a parent's concern over inappropriate books at a book fair with these statements. Laura Blackwell agreed, "This is why Scholastic has been notified. We will no longer be using them as a vendor since they cannot be trusted. This mess has to be called out and stopped." Another Facebook post concerning one of our middle schools and a book that was being questioned, Ms. Blackwell also stated, "This has been addressed and the books have been pulled for review and the superintendent has handled the situation appropriately. Please keep us updated as you see situations so we can address them quickly." Now, therefore, due to this violation of the Cabarrus County School Board policy, Board Member Laura Blackwell is hereby censured and most, and must refrain from committing such violations in the future. That is your censure verbiage. Is that your motion, Ms. Adcock?
Yes, it is.
Is that a second, Ms. Black, Ms. Carpenter?
Yes.
Okay. Any other Board comments or, Ms. Blackwell, would you like to make a comment?
Here we go again. It is now abundantly clear to myself, those watching, and those in this room that there is an effort to silence me. You may not agree with what I say, but the fact is of the matter is that I have a constitutional right to freedom of speech. I am not a perfect person nor have I ever made claims to be, but my views have not changed. I can be censured and I can be told to be quiet, but when it comes to protecting these children from perverted and inappropriate material, the safety of these children is in my hands and no, Carolyn Carpenter, I will not sit on my hands and keep my mouth shut. That's not what they hired me to do. My first important, well, children will always be first. Maybe I did use the wrong pronoun by using the word "we" to show a team effort against Scholastic. They put an absolutely repulsive book in the hands of a sixth grader. We should all be disgusted, but instead, there are those that would rather defend Scholastic because they give so much money to the school system. Nonsense. That is exactly what the problem is. People are more concerned about the threat of losing money instead of the threat of losing our children's innocence. I will never succumb to the intense pressure and scrutiny that comes with making tough decisions that need to be made on this Board of Education. These children deserve to have people that will fight for them and that are strong enough to do it and keep this material out of the school system. You will not silence me.
Thank you. Board members?
Thank you, Chair.
Yes, sir. I need to amend the agenda to add the vote.
Yes, if that's what y'all are going to do.
Okay, I was getting ready to, okay, thank you. So, I need to back up and let you amend the agenda to add the vote if y'all would like to continue with the censure.
Can you amend the agenda to add a motion to censure Ms. Blackwell?
Do you have a second?
Second.
Have a motion by Ms. Adcock, a second by Ms. Carolyn. All those in favor to add the motion to censure Ms. Blackwell to the agenda, say aye. All those opposed?
No.
No.
I need hands in the air. Opposed, I mean, I'm sorry, in favor of? Opposed? Okay, so that's a four-three. Motion passes. Now, your motion stays the same on the floor, consistent with the censure?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Park Carpenter, you agree to the second on that as well for the censure? Okay. All those in favor, right hand up in the air, please.
I have a question, Jay. Is that to change the agenda, is it a two-thirds majority?
I believe it is. Let me look at it real quick, if you can give me just two minutes. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any other Board member comments? We'll give Mr. White a moment to take a look at that.
Madam Chair, may I ask our superintendent, in this situation, what was actually done? You did get that cleared up, is that not correct? That parent did get the money back and we do have this situation cleared up. Is that correct?
I think we're talking, I think there's a lot of detail here that we're covering tonight. If we're talking about the situation at Mount Pleasant Middle School, it is my understanding that the principal did handle the situation.
And the child did not get the bit. I know that Ms. Blackwell was trying to make her political statement here and, but the situation, the child did return the book, so the child did not get, they got their money back, the child did not have the book, so that was taken care of. Correct.
I believe you're correct. I would have to go back and speak with the principal of the middle school to verify what you're saying, but my understanding is that the principal did address the situation and the child was, the student was reimbursed. But I don't want to misquote myself or you. I'd like to check back with the principal again to make sure I can verify that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Might I add something, please?
Sure.
Regardless as to the child getting their money back, they were already exposed to the, the perverted book itself, so the damage had already been done.
Can I ask a question? So, since we're talking about all of this for the public, there needs to be clarity, in my opinion, on what has happened, because we don't want people to have questions when we can clarify it. So, for example, we've said that there has been a comment that says that Scholastic has been put on notice, they're no longer able to provide books here. Is that correct? Can we clarify if that is correct?
Well, I wasn't there, so I have no idea if the superintendent wants to handle that. These comments and these concerns were brought to me to add to the agenda, so I'm assuming whomever has the most issue with it and the knowledge needs to speak to it, but I'll let Dr. Kapicki.
In terms of Scholastic, it is, there has been no directive to eliminate Scholastic from participating in book fairs. We only address this one incident and I only address this with that particular principal, but there's been no, there's been no directive to remove them from our book fairs.
Okay, so that brings another question to me. Was there a conversation that happened with Scholastic? Like, how did this get out to where we're saying Scholastic has been put on notice, we won't be using them anymore? Was there a conversation that happened somewhere to lead somebody to even make that comment?
I can't comment on that. I can't speak for anybody else. I didn't have that conversation with anybody.
So, we as a district have not spoken to Scholastic to, I guess, put them on notice or say, "You can't bring these types of materials in here," or limit the types of materials that come in? Has that discussion happened somewhere? And I'm sorry I got all these questions just based off of making it clear for the general public.
No, and again, I think for, for clarity for this particular incident, to my knowledge, it's one incident we're talking about, I think it would be the principal that we'd want to, want to comment on that as to the exact actions. It's my understanding that he did have a conversation to get to request reimbursement for the book. But again, I'd like to clarify that with the principal before I say for 100% certain, but that is my understanding, but we did not remove Scholastic from the book fairs.
Thank you.
If I can make a comment of clarity?
Sure.
In conversation with the mother that I had, it was brought to her attention that the conversation that, or the email that was sent from the principal to Scholastic was that if they could not be trusted to provide material that was suitable for children, then they would not be using them anymore.
Okay, and so, does that email that we're referring to now, does that mean the entire district or just that specific school? I mean, I think we're creating a lot of things that could be questioned and that could be suggestive, so can we just make sure we clarify what we're doing with Scholastic going forward? I don't know what our contract says. I hope I'm making sense, Dr. Kapicki. I just, if we had the opportunity to clarify what we are doing with Scholastic, what happened in this situation with this particular principal and this particular student or parent, it would be great for me. I don't know if anybody else needs that.
Well, I tell you what, Dr. Kapicki, I'm going to take this because, number one, we do need a two-thirds, so that motion has failed to add it to the agenda, so there'll be no further action taken. So, how about we have Dr. Kapicki to email the Board on what actually took place and that part of it, okay? And the update. Yeah, that would be great. For the viewing audience, we spent a good amount of time the last meeting discussing violations of Board policy, Board members' conduct, Board members' responsibilities. So, we've had that. I'm pretty sure everybody's very familiar with it. So, just knowing that we've had the discussion, the Board members wanted it brought back again because of some other information that was added afterwards, but the motion is failing to add it to the agenda, so at this point in time, it's a mute point. So, with that, we are going to move on unless Board members have another comment.
So, the motion fails? The motion fails?
Yes, I needed five and it was a four-three. Okay, so motion fails. Okay. All right, with that being said, for the viewing audience, we have a regular scheduled meeting at 6:00 PM that has to be maintained, a 6:00 PM meeting, so we are going to take a recess and resume the meeting at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Tonight's colors were presented by Northwest Cabarrus High School. Personnel are Cadet Airmen Alaric Williams, Cadet Second Lieutenant Christopher Talbert, Cadet Airmen Caitlin Pond, Cadet Airmen Allison Gomez, and Cadet Airmen Cole Burgess. The National Anthem was performed tonight by Cox Mill High School Woodwind Quartet, Quintet, thank you, sorry, Emily Cordis, can't count, Haley Masterson, Natalie Exum, Caitlin Tobin, Edward Jong. Director of the Cox Mill High School Band is Adam Singer. Thank you.
Okay, I need to ask our cameramen, are y'all ready back there? Okay, great, thank you. We will say welcome to our viewing audience that is joining us livestream. The Cabarrus County Board of Education's Combined Work Session and Business Meeting for November the 1st, 2022 has already been called to order. We will now begin with the National Anthem. Actually, we have already done that, so thank you. This is so out of order, thank you. We will begin with recognitions under our 5.01 Impact Through Education Awards, and we'll have Mr. Filfer to the podium, please.
Good evening.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Kavicki, good evening. Tonight, we'll present Impact Through Education Awards to students and staff at Charles E. Boger Elementary and Roberta Road Middle School. Our sponsors for the Impact Awards are our friends at Equitable. At this time, I would like to invite our Equitable representative, Emily Savery, to join me at the front of the room. Before we get started with the awards, please accept our sincere thanks and gratitude to Equitable for its continued sponsorship of the Impact Through Education Awards. We're in the 13th year of honoring those making an impact in our schools with this award. We appreciate your support and thank you for helping us celebrate and recognize deserving students and staff. We also want to say a word of thanks to our Cabarrus Regional Chamber and to Concord Trophy Center for providing us with the award plaques each month. Now, on to tonight's awards. We will begin with Charles E. Boger Elementary School. May I have the Boger Elementary Administrative Team come forward? Our first honoree from Charles E. Boger Elementary School is Carter Stavanger. Carter, please come forward with your family. Carter's a 5th grade student at C.E. Boger Elementary School. He's been a part of the chorus program at the school and has been involved in many musical productions. Carter's teacher describes him as a positive influence on his classmates. She shares that he is always helpful to her and his peers. He's very responsible and always helping out when asked. She said he is always helpful and just all-around awesome. Congratulations, Carter, you're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Boger Elementary School. Our next honoree from William Boger Elementary School is Dalton Paxton. Dalton, please come forward with your family. Dalton is a 5th grade student at C.E. Boger Elementary School. He enjoys sports and being competitive. Dalton's teacher describes him as being a joy. She shares that he always has a positive attitude, is always helpful, and is a great friend to his classmates. Congratulations, Dalton, you're an Impact Through Education Award winner for William E. Boger Elementary School. Also from Boger Elementary School is staff member Cynthia Batea. Ms. Batea, please come forward with your family.
Ms. Batea joined Boger Elementary School in the fall of 2015 as a teacher assistant. She has a degree in elementary education and her Hill Rap certification. At Boger, she contributes in many ways. She serves children of all grade levels in her position as an instructional assistant, providing intervention instruction and whatever else is needed on a daily basis. This year, Ms. Batea has served as a 4th grade classroom teacher for one of our classrooms that has had a teacher vacancy. Ms. Batea's colleagues describe her as a flexible, multi-talented, a team player, and someone who is able to see the big picture and do whatever is best for the school. Congratulations, Cynthia, you're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Boger Elementary School.
And finally, from Boger Elementary School is teacher Nathan Wyatt. Mr. Wyatt, please come forward with your family.
Mr. Wyatt joined Boger Elementary School in the fall of 2020 as an EC Resource teacher. Mr. Wyatt is a BCBA and has a master's degree in special education. He holds his certification in K-6 General Curriculum, K-12 Special Education, and K-12 Adaptive Curriculum Special Education. He serves the school as the chair of their EC department. Currently, Mr. Wyatt serves the school in an extended reach position, teaching both the EC resource classes and one of the structured learning classes. Mr. Wyatt's colleagues described him as a kind, hardworking, patient, and flexible. He is known for building strong relationships with all the students at Boger. Congratulations, Nathan, you're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Boger Elementary School.
We'll now continue with our November Impact Through Education Awards by welcoming Roberta Road Middle School. May I have the Roberta Road Administrative Team come forward? Our first honoree from Roberta Road Middle School is Noah Mobley. Noah, please come forward with your family. Noah is a well-respected 7th grade student. He has a positive attitude and is frequently seen using his high level of intelligence to contribute to the learning of others. He shares his great ideas and assists others that may be struggling to understand a concept in class. He has a kind heart and wants everyone to be included. His teachers shared a recent situation where Noah voluntarily changed seats to be able to engage in an activity with a student that was working alone. Noah's teachers enjoy his sense of humor and the way he makes others feel welcome. They indicate he's a natural leader and models what it is to be an independent learner. Noah has a reputation of pushing himself to be successful every day. For all these reasons, Noah's teachers consider it an honor to have him in their classrooms and appreciate the positive impact he has on the total learning environment and all those within it. Congratulations, Noah, you are the first ever Impact Through Education Award winner for Roberta Road Middle School. Next, from Roberta Road is staff member Tabitha Figueroa Pagan. Ms. Figueroa Pagan, please come forward with your family. Ms. Pagan is the first one to greet any guest at Roberta Road Middle School, and she always does it with the most genuine smile and warm greeting. Her friendly face and calm demeanor make her the perfect fit for her role as school receptionist. Staff members refer to Tabitha as the operator of our grand central station, and they consistently remark about how impressed that she multitasks at high levels and always does so with patience, kindness, and respect for the students, staff, and family members she supports. No matter whether she is responding to the phone, the radio, the front door, an email, or people waiting, wanting in the front office, staff members know they can count on Tabitha to do so promptly, professionally, and in English or Spanish as needed. The Raptor family is so grateful for the impact Tabitha has had in establishing a warm front porch waiting area for the school. Congratulations, Tabitha, you are the second Impact Through Education Award winner for Roberta Road Middle School. Next, from Roberta Road is teacher Abigail Huber. Ms. Huber, please come forward with your family. Ms. Huber is new in her role as the lead teacher for the Exceptional Children's Program at Roberta Road Middle School. You would never know that she was new to this role based on the way she leads and supports the teachers and students within the program. Her colleagues describe her as being dedicated, caring, and kind teacher. The value she places upon the students and staff she supports is obvious by her contagious smile and relentless pursuit of what is best. Ms. Huber is the ultimate team player and frequently puts the needs of others before herself. Her effectiveness as the EC lead teacher comes from her knowledge, experience, and meticulous record-keeping. The Roberta Road Middle School staff is so thankful that Ms. Huber chose the Raptor family as the group she would pour her heart and soul into. She is creating a positive educational environment for students within the Exceptional Children's Program, but will additionally offer support and assistance to all staff and students. She models what it means to be a dedicated learner and has been diligent in her efforts to create appropriate procedures and plans to provide services and efficient practices for their EC Department. Her impact on Roberta Road Middle School is definitely felt by all. Congratulations, Abigail, you're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Roberta Road Middle School. And finally, from Roberta Road is Kayden Alsop, and she's running a little bit behind, and we're going to go ahead and invite her family to come forward at this time. Kayden Alsop is an 8th grade student that has very quickly won the respect of her teachers and peers at Roberta Road Middle School. Kayden is an outstanding student athlete. Her teachers describe her as a leader amongst her peers, a hard worker, and one who takes responsibility for her own learning. Kayden is known to consistently make wise choices and display excellent school spirit. One of the most endearing qualities of Kayden is her willingness and desire to help others. Kayden's teachers remarked that she is very respectful towards all adults and peers. Additionally, they indicate she consistently demonstrates academic excellence and creativity in the arts. Kayden's adaptability and positive attitude result in high levels of success in the environment. The Roberta Road Middle School Raptor family is blessed to have Kayden sharing her positive impact with them each day. We want to congratulate Kayden for being an Impact Through Education Award winner for Roberta Road Middle School. This concludes our Impact Awards presentations for tonight. Congratulations to all our recipients, and thanks again to our partners, Equitable and Cabarrus Chamber of Commerce, for your partnership.
Thank you, Mr. Fer. We will move to 5.02, the Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month, and we will have Dr. Marion Bish to the podium. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Kupicki, our viewing audience, and those watching on our livestream. As always, it is my pleasure to introduce to you our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for November. We always want to begin with expressing our thanks and gratitude to Mr. Tim Vaughn and Hillbush Ford for their generosity and sponsorship of this recognition program. Our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for November is Craig Waskiewicz, a science teacher at CC Griffin STEM Middle School. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Waskiewicz, his family, and any members of the school's administrative team to come forward. I'd like to share what Principal Yolanda Blakeney had to say about Mr. Waskiewicz. Mr. Waskiewicz, known as Mr. Woski, and that's what I'm going to say from now on, on campus, is a valuable member of the CC Griffin team. He's a 7th grade science teacher who brings innovative ideas as well as increased technology use and rigor to his PLC. He has great relationships with students, parents, and staff. His devotion to creating a positive impact on the educational experience of students is very well noted in his role as Student Council Advisor. He advocates on behalf of Student Council students so that they have a well-rounded experience of service, leadership, and fun. He also supports athletics by serving on the coaching staff for our student athletes. We are so grateful to have Mr. Woski at CC Griffin. Mr. Woski was nominated by one of his students. We'd like to share that nomination with you. Mr. Waskiewicz is an overall amazing teacher. He makes learning super fun. He cares about his students, and he always knows how to make things learning relevant to our lives. He is very loving, and he is underappreciated. He's one of the hardest-working teachers I know, and he's the reason I love coming to school every day. Mr. Waskiewicz, thank you for the impact you're making to teach and engage the students, both in your classroom and through extracurricular activities. Congratulations on your selection as Cabarrus County Schools' Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month. I will allow Dr. Kupicki to present you with your check and certificate.
Thank you. We will keep you for Principal of the Year.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite Mrs. Tanya Williams and her family to the front.
Thank you. Tanya Williams is a veteran educator who began her journey as an elementary teacher at Weddington Hills Elementary in Cabarrus County Schools, teaching 4th and 5th grade students. During that time, she was also a test writer and editor for the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. She moved into a lead teacher position at Weddington Hills and then pursued her administrative degree as a principal fellow. Upon completion of the program, she served as an assistant principal at Cox Mill Elementary before being named principal of Harrisburg Elementary. She later transitioned to WM Irvin Elementary and then to Concord Middle School, where she now serves as principal. Tanya successfully implemented the North Carolina Global Ready School at Harrisburg Elementary, only the second elementary school in the state to do so at that time. She then led WM Irvin to the IB Primary Years Program Authorization. While serving at Irvin, she led academic improvement from low-performing status to the top 7% in the state for student growth. Ms. Williams currently serves as the Cabarrus County Schools' Middle School Principal Representative for the Southwest Regional Advisory Principal Group. She holds a Bachelor of Science degree in Communication Disorders from Appalachian State University, a Master of Arts in Elementary Education from Gardner-Webb University, and a Master of School Administration and Curriculum Specialist from UNC Charlotte. The peer nomination for Ms. Williams states this: "She works daily to cultivate and grow a love of learning in the students she supports in order to produce lifelong learners." Tanya is a dedicated educator who has true care and concern for her students, her school, and her community. In addition, Tanya has a natural ability to connect with students and teachers. Her daily work centers around extending her educational reach in order to close the opportunity gap for her students and their families. She leads by example and is an outstanding role model for administrators in our district. Her peers confirm her exceptional qualities and utilize her work as an example for others to follow. It is my honor, after so many years, to proudly recognize Ms. Tanya Williams as the 2022-23 Cabarrus County Schools' Principal of the Year.
Okay, board members, we see that Kayden has entered the room. Yes? So let's take a moment for her to come up so the board can recognize her just real quick. Okay, board members, we will move to the approval of minutes, and I will ask for a motion that the board approve the minutes for the open session meetings for October the 3rd, 2022, and October the 10th, 2022, unless we have comments or corrections.
I'll move to approve those.
I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, a second by Mr. Fer. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously. And next, we will move to 7.01, Board Chair Comments and Superintendent and Attorney Comments. I would just like to take a moment and thank the SROs that are here with us tonight, and we appreciate you being here during our meetings. Thank you very much. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Kupicki.
Thank you, Ms. Grimsley. Again, I'd like to acknowledge Tanya Williams and the award of being Principal of the Year. It's kind of appropriate, this...
This past weekend, I was able to go out to J.M. Robinson and attend the inaugural Pride of Robinson Invitational. And at that invitational, which was a band competition, three of our high schools, Concord High School, Central Cabarrus High School, and J.M. Robinson, participated, along with, I would say, approximately about 15 to 20 other bands from across the state of North Carolina and South Carolina. It was extraordinary to see. Showed up there, they asked me to present a few awards, I said, sure, I'd love to be part of that, and went out there, got to see about an hour and a half of the presentation, and then realized there were 73 awards to hand out. But it was really, it was very rewarding to see and to watch our kids participate. And I want to impress upon our board and thank our board and our teachers again for supporting the humanities and the arts in our school system. There were more people at that event than I've seen at any event this year. Both stands were packed, there was standing room only around the fields, parents, sponsors, there were so many people there. The band boosters did a phenomenal job of creating a great environment there. It was just sensational. And, you know, I commend Drew Carter for his leadership, and Dennis Hobbs, our principal, for putting on such a fine performance. It's just a great thing to see, and I would encourage anyone that can, if you get an opportunity, please go out in and see any of those competitions. You'll see some extraordinary talent. It's amazing to watch our kids perform, and they're so talented. And I'm immensely jealous because I can play no instrument, but they are incredible. So, congratulations to them. Last two things, I'd like to congratulate Amy Louder and all the people that are involved in our school safety grant program. We were notified this week that the Center for Safe School Safety Grant has approved our application for the record amount of our school system in the tune of about $1.5 million. And what that covers is all of our schools and all of our equipment that we use and many other things that Amy and her team leads to keep our schools safe. So, she should be commended for that, and we thank her very much for continuing to do such a fantastic job of making safety the number-one part in our district, to make sure that we have the resources to provide for our kids on a daily basis. And then lastly, I just want to wish everybody in the next coming weeks all the best as the election comes up, and I would encourage everybody to get out there and vote. And to the woman on my right, I would say, thank you very much for your leadership. Thank you very much for your friendship, and this is not goodbye, this is off to your new beginning, and we wish you all the best. And I know that a lot of times, you sit up here and take a lot of the hits and the bullets and a lot of the grief that goes with the job, but I will say, I can attest, and I will stand firmly by you and say that you are always in it for kids, and I appreciate you for that very much. Your support does not go unnoticed, and we appreciate that. All the best. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that very much. Okay, one more time.
Before you go, I forgot one last thing. This week, we will be putting out, and I notified the board over the last couple of weeks, and again this week, we were going to put out the request for proposal for our school district realignment, and we are going to put in that. We'll put that proposal out, I will send it off to the board again one more time for review, for any input. And in that proposal, we will also include a statement at the end of that that talks about how we're going to evaluate that process, and that we will limit it down to three vendors, and those three vendors will be, all of vendors will go through an internal committee that we will evaluate with, we'll use our own system inside our internal committee. Those vendors will be evaluated, we'll narrow it down to the three vendors to bring in front of the board to give a public presentation, at which time, the board will vote and select one of the vendors. So, I would hope over the next couple of months that that process will evolve and take place, and I will keep the board up to date on that. So, that will be going out this week, and again, I will send it off to the board tomorrow again for your review one more time before it goes out. Any feedback, I would appreciate, but thank you for your feedback thus far, and we will keep moving forward with that. So, thank you. Ms. Grimsley?
Thank you, and thank you for your kind words and comments. I appreciate that. Next, we will have 7.03, Board Attorney Comments. Anything, Mr. White?
No, madam chair.
What about Mr. Vogel?
No.
Okay, thank you. Moving to Reports, 8.01, Committee Reports. Board members, I'll start with Ms. Sandage. Anything on your end?
Sure. So, just wanted to remind folks that we have our Schools and Community Engagement Committee, which will be November 15th, 2022, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. It will be right here in the boardroom. Members, you should receive an email over the next week confirming your attendance. Please respond to that and let us know that you got it so that we will have your name ready and to go when we meet. I also wanted to just thank Beverly Hills for allowing me to come read to all of their kindergarten classroom. It was a pleasure. I got so many questions, and it was just interesting to watch our children really engage in identifying somebody that they see on TV and somebody that most of them didn't even know. I also saw one young man out in the community that next week, and he remembered my name. So, hey, honey, how you doing?
Mr. Walter?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Furr?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Blackwell?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Carpenter?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Ms. Adcock?
No, thank you.
I'm sorry, one last thing.
Sure.
Our topic for that Schools and Community Engagement Committee meeting is Exceptional Children, so we will have a presentation from the Exceptional Children's Department, so all are welcome, and I just wanted to remind that.
That was good information. Thank you. Now, we will move to our Action Agenda, items under 9.01, the Budget Amendments, and we will have Mrs. Carol Herndon to the podium. Good evening.
Good evening, board. I am happy to bring to you the first budget amendment for 2022-2023, and the format that I am bringing forward in our budget amendments across the year mirrors the format that I introduced as part of the initial budget resolution. So, you'll see consistency and familiarity with regard to format. So, if we'll pull up the first attachment, there you go. At a high level, you'll see that our current budget now totals almost $470 million. That's an increase of $3.2 million from the initial budget resolution that you all passed in September at $466 million. If you look at the next document, it will summarize in this same format the changes by fund. There you go, right there. And as you would expect, this early in our fiscal and school year, there are not a tremendous amount of changes in this first budget amendment. We are well into the school year but still receiving additional allotments from the state and tweaks and refinements to our budget, as would be normal for this time of the year. About $3 million of the changes that I'm presenting to you relate to our state funds, and almost $720,000 of that $3 million is a new allotment in what we call Program Report Code 085, and those funds are to support our letters training that is required by the state of North Carolina, and that funding will cover our substitutes that manage instruction while our teachers train for letters, and also the stipend that we are paying to our teachers for the extra time and work that they are putting in to complete the required training. The other changes in the state fund relate to reconciling our planning allotments. Early in each fiscal year, the state provides us with their best guess of our allotments in the form of planning allotments so that we can start to build our budgets, and then as the year goes on, they actually distribute the actual allotments. And so, if there are any differences between the two, we have to reconcile those and present them to you in the form of a budget amendment. So, the rest of the activity in the state fund is the normal reconciliation between the planning allotments and the actual allotments that come to us from the state. The change in the local fund for this budget amendment number one is a slight modification to a revenue projection, just about $35,000, where we got some additional information that indicated that we would get a bit more revenue than we had originally budgeted, so we're reflecting that in this amendment. For our federal fund, Fund III, we did actually receive a small but welcomed additional allotment for both ESR II and ESR III. That is a result of districts that have said, we don't want it, we can't spend it, we're giving it back, and the state reallocating those monies back to those of us LEAs, Local Education Agencies, that are happy to have it and spend it on behalf of our children. So, we received that additional allotment during this period as well. And then finally, for our Fund VIII, Special Revenue Fund, we had an additional $45,000 received, two grants, one related specifically to West Cabarrus High School, and the other is the grant that we get annually to support Chinese instruction in our schools for several of our schools. And so, that is the activity that I'm sharing with you in this budget amendment one. We will bring to you a budget amendment every month unless, for some reason, we don't have activity, which is rarely the case, and we are excited to continue to receive these additional funding buckets and putting them to work for our students. And so, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I will open the floor for discussion. I'll begin with Ms. Adcock.
I don't have any comments about it, just that's great, whenever we have additional funds, like you said, so great job.
Ms. Carpenter?
No questions. And again, I like this additional funds. Thank you.
Ms. Blackwell?
Again, thank you for all of this information. Now, with the additional ESR funds that we've received, how is that going to be allotted? Like, do we know what that's going to go for?
We haven't had a chance to talk about that internally yet, but we will, and make sure that if we have any funding gaps, we fill those first, or if there's anything productive we can do with a relatively small amount versus just put it into salaries.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. Mr. Furr?
No questions.
Mr. Walter?
Yeah, I appreciate the explanations, and it's interesting. One question I did have, how did we come out with our ADM on 20th Day of School Numbers? Is that...
We have not gotten confirmation from the Department of Public Instruction yet, but we are well above our allotted ADM, so they allotted us at 36, no, excuse me, $34,600 some odd students, and we're at 34,000, over 34,800, so we'll be in great shape with no pending reversion.
That's good.
Great news.
Ms. Sandage?
So, Laura actually asked my question, but I wanted to go just a little bit deeper. There's been a lot of confusion around ESR funds, so if we could just clarify where those go, when we identify where they're going, that would be good. If that's an email to the board or whatever that, well, an email to me, I can't speak for everybody else, but I want to know where it's going, if that's possible.
I will. When we finalize that, I will certainly share that. I will tell you that my best gut feeling is that we will apply it to our salary commitment for the additional resources that we've placed in our schools to help with learning loss. But I'll confirm that once we're aligned.
Thank you. And how much was it?
In total, $65,000 between the two buckets.
Yeah, if you could let me know where, okay, thank you.
Sure will, I'll let you all know.
Okay, board members, may I have a motion to adopt the budget amendments as presented for 2022-2023?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Adcock, and a second by Ms. Blackwell. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously. Now, may I have a motion that policy 4700 be approved as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Walter.
I'll second.
A second by Ms. Blackwell. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
With Ms. Carpenter, that's fine, thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to 9.03, Policy 3210, second read, and we will have Board Attorney Jay White to the podium.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and what I wanted to tell the board also is that in companion with 3210, we've been working on 3200, and that is, I did not see that on the calendar tonight, so I would ask the board to consider adding 3200 to be adopted as well, and it's been put on board docs for the public to see as well as the, as well as the board to see. This is the instructional materials. This has gone through the first read, both have gone through the first read. After the first read, there has been some questions about 3210 and some additional information that needed to go back to the committee to be reviewed, and I will tell this board that under 3210, there is a couple of changes that were made at the request of the committee that I wanted to highlight to this board. Let me see if I can pull it up. So... Let's see. You can scroll up just a little bit. Okay, what I wanted to call, keep on going, keep on going. There you go. A little bit farther. Okay, write down, we want to get B up there. So, one of the things that was brought up is under subsection B, a parent/guardian of a current Cabarrus County School student or Cabarrus County Schools employee who has an objection to instructional materials being used in their affiliated school may file a request for reconsideration. So, that is what, one of the things that was brought up by the board that the committee approved. One of the things that I do want to bring to your attention is that the material needs to be you, needs to be at the affiliated school where the student is going or where the employee is employed at, so that, so that was added from the committee that was maybe different from the last one we talked about or y'all talked about last month. So, I wanted to call that to your attention. If you will scroll up or keep on going, up, there you go, there you go. Uh, may have gone to a little bit farther, so I want to, I'm looking, okay, there you go. So, the next, the paragraph that you see, if the objection is related to media collections, then the resource will not be removed pending review by the reconsideration committee unless the principal determines that the material is obscene as defined by the U.S. Supreme Court. Now, you don't have to scroll down to the bottom, but if you look at the bottom of the policy, it does reference Miller versus California. The Miller versus California references obscene material is obscene if the... Now, may I have a motion that Policy 4,700 be approved as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Walter.
I'll second.
A second by Ms. Blackwell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
With Ms. Carpenter, that's fine, thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to 9.03, Policy 3210, second read, and we will have Board Attorney Jay White to the podium.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And what I wanted to tell the Board also is that in companion with 3210, we've been working on 3,200, and that is, I did not see that on the calendar tonight. So I would ask the Board to consider adding 3,200 to be adopted as well. And it's been put on Board Docs for the public to see, as well as the, as well as the Board to see. This is the instructional materials. This has gone through the first read. Both have gone through the first read. After the first read, there has been some questions about 3210 and some additional information that needed to go back to the committee to be reviewed. And I will tell this Board that under 3210, there is a couple of changes that were made at the request of the committee that I wanted to highlight to this Board. Let me see if I can pull it up. Let's see. You can scroll up just a little bit. Okay, what I wanted to call, keep on going, keep on going. There you go. A little bit farther. Okay, write down, we want to get B up there. So, one of the things that was brought up is under subsection B, "A parent/guardian of a current Cabarrus County school student or Cabarrus County school's employee who has an objection to instructional materials being used in their affiliated school may file a request for reconsideration." So that is what, one of the things that was brought up by the Board that the committee approved. One of the things that I do want to bring to your attention is that the material needs to be, needs to be at the affiliated school where the student is going, or where the employee is employed at. So that was, that was added from the committee. That was maybe different from the last one we talked about, or y'all talked about, last month. So I wanted to call that to your attention. If you will scroll up, or keep on going, up, India, there you go. There you go. Oh. Maybe gone to a little bit farther. So I want to, I'm looking, okay, there you go. So the next, the paragraph that you see, "If the objection is related to media collections, then the resource will not be removed pending review by the reconsideration committee unless the principal determines that the material is obscene as defined by the U.S. Supreme Court." Now, you don't have to scroll down to the bottom, but if you look at the bottom of the policy, it does reference Miller versus California. The Miller versus California references obscene material is obscene if the average person applying contemporary community standards would find the work taken as a whole appeals to the purient interest. Number two, whether the work depicts or describes in a patently offensive way sexual conduct or excretory functions specifically defined by applicable state law, and whether the work taken as a whole lacks serious literary, artistic, political, or scientific value. And if all three of those apply, then what would happen is they would be, that material would be removed pending reconsideration. And when it's been removed for reconsideration, the reconsideration committee would then review that material. So the idea that Mr. Walter brought up, not the idea, the concern that Mr. Walter brought up and was seconded by Mrs. Carpenter, not to the exclusion of the rest of the members, but they specifically brought it up, is what do we do with material that is patently pornographic or patently obscene? And that's what the Miller test addresses. So you would have it. Now, you know, the committee really thought long and hard, did a lot of good discussion about some other policies and using that language in, and whether or not that policy would apply and should apply. And then they settled on the Miller versus California test. It's not mentioned specifically in the policy because with this day and age and our Supreme Court, who knows if it's going to change or whatnot? So the idea is it follows the laws set up by the Supreme Court, and the change may be the interpretation down below referencing Miller versus California. So that addresses it there. And then, so, with those changes, the policy committee, excuse me, the literacy committee, I believe voted 15 to two, or 16 to two, 16 to three. So that's where, so it was by the majority, this is recommended to the Board. Any questions on 3210?
Okay, I will open up the floor for discussion. I'll begin with Ms. Sandage.
So question, is there anywhere that states that the Board reads a book?
Yes.
And when does that happen?
Well, I would tell you, it's just like an appeal, well, not like, it is similar to an appeal and a grievance, is until it gets to the Board, it does not have to be read, doesn't have to be read by the Board, because you got to be fair and impartial. And so it only happens if it gets appealed to the Board. So, let me give you the quick scenario of how you would start reading it. It starts at the school level, and then, and then, for whatever reason, however, it moves to the district level. And then, however, then it gets appealed to the Board. Then, when it gets appealed to the Board, if you'll scroll down, so that, a little bit more, okay, right there. So then, what happens is, then, then the Board, under 2,500, and based upon Mrs. Adcock's request at the last meeting, the majority of the Board would be meeting and reviewing the book and reading the book. Okay?
So we're the last stop, I understand that?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So what you could do is, if you know a book is being, not challenged, but if it's being asked for reconsideration, you can go ahead and read it. I would just ask not to have an opinion one way or the other until y'all get together and discuss it.
Okay, let me just reserve and let everybody else ask questions, and then come back to me.
Mr. Walter?
Yeah, that was one of my concerns as well, because I think that's not something the Board really wants to do, is read a book that's got, if it has to do with sexually explicit material, I don't want to read that. I think we can make a judgment based on the descriptions. So I don't like, I would, I'd like that number ace taken off for the Board, anyway. It's, it looks to me like it's, the policy's been simplified. Again, it's a little bit better than it was, but I still, when I read through it, there's a lot of questions and confusion. It doesn't really seem very easy for someone who has an objection to go through, go through the steps. It looks pretty onerous. And then we have things in here that, when I read them, you know, you're telling, the principal has to determine if the material is obscene. Principal has to determine if constitutional or other legal rights are being violated, yet down here at the end, here, the school improvement team has to consult with the attorney, not the principal. So that's, you know, you should certainly have the principal consult with the attorney as well. It says here under F, "Complete a reconsider review committee rubric," but we don't provide that rubric in the policy or anything else here. So again, we're throwing something out there that's confusing. We keep saying reconsideration when essentially it's an objection. So they're not reconsidering, they're objecting to the material. So that's confusing. Can you define again the contemporaneous wording? Is that just voluminous, is that?
Sorry.
What was the definition of contemporaneous again?
So the idea on the contemporaneous petition, or request for reconsideration, is based upon, I believe, one of the discussions at the Board is, what happens if we have multiple requests for reconsideration within a short period of time? And that would be, that would be treated as one request for reconsideration, instead of automatically jumping it from Level One to Level Two to the Board. Does that make sense? Or am I making sense, Mr. Walter?
Yeah, I understand, I think I understand.
So the idea, I'm sorry to cut you off, the idea is, if there is a clear beginning and end of the request for this book, if there's another reconsideration, then that would be, could be a Level Two.
Okay, and then the last one I had here was, you know, we're encouraging informal resolutions, encouraging a meeting with the principal. Well, if it's an informal resolution, then you don't have to go through any of this stuff if the principal says okay? So again, I don't, I don't know, I just, when I read it, it doesn't seem like it's an easily understood policy, and those are my thoughts.
Mr. Walter, if I could please, I'm going to take over here for just a minute. Mr. Walter, explain to me and the viewing audience, what happens when there's an appeal to the Board? What's the process? Not in this, but in anything that we have to deal with as the Board appeals, what happens?
We follow the policies on appeals.
Okay, but what, explain that. You've been on this Board for a very long time, and you were Board Chair, and you had to conduct those hearings. So tell me what takes place.
I don't need to explain that, we can all read the policy.
Well, this is, the point is being made, is this is how it gets to the Board. So of course, it starts at the school level. If it's not resolved there, it comes to the superintendent or the second level. And then the third level is, if it's not resolved, it comes to the Board. This is no different than anything else we actually handle, and it's the way it should be done. And on top of that, you always read, I hope, your packet and all that is entailed in that investigation or whatever takes place for those appeal hearings, correct?
Correct.
Right, so that would be the same thing with, if the topic of discussion is the book, then you're going to have to read a book in order to make an opinion if it gets to the Board.
I disagree with that, you don't have to read the book to come up with...
Well, that's fine, but I just don't want people thinking that we don't have a process for how appeals are done.
Okay, if it's pornography, I'm not going to sit there and read the pornography, sorry.
Well, you don't even have to participate in a hearing, it's the majority of the Board. So if you chose not to participate in that particular hearing, it's like anything else we do. Some of y'all show up, and some of you don't, so that's okay.
Or you can assign an appeal, you can assign a committee, correct? A lot of these times, we want the full Board to hear it.
That's exactly right, but you can choose or not to participate. So I just want that clear, that this Board has a process for appeals, and this is no different.
Me personally, I'd be eliminated for any of this.
That's perfectly fine, that's perfectly fine. Thank you. Mr. Furr?
Well, I got to 10, the last meeting, and really was impressed in the discussion. I think with the process that we have, the appeal process, it makes sense, we're consistent. And that's all we really wanted, was something that was consistent. I've got all the confidence in the world that the principals will handle it, probably in 90% of the cases. I think it can be handled between adults at the school level, and if it doesn't, then we got the process, just like Ms. Grimsley just said, anything else. So I'm okay with it. And again, just, you know, like Rob kept saying, you know, none of us want that in, I mean, just make that clear, we don't want that in the school system, so, but somebody, at some point, it may come down to where we're going to, if the buck stops here, then we may have to read the books. Thank you.
Ms. Blackwell? Okay, just a couple questions. So you mentioned the Miller versus California?
Yes, ma'am.
So within that, my, I think my concern is that if a book is being, I don't know, requested to be looked at, at a specific school, and it's not, let's just say that it happens to be egregious, are we not going to pull that book from every school?
According to the policy, this policy, if you vote on it tonight, nut. It would be just for that one school.
Okay. And we still, it's not going to be anonymous?
Correct. It would be, now, it would not be anonymous, but the person could ask for their information to be held confidential, but it would not be anonymous.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Carpenter?
And one of my questions, and it looks like they had limited to the parent/guardian of a current Cabarrus County student or Cabarrus County school employee, is that correct?
At the affected school, yes, ma'am.
So it's not the taxpayers of Cabarrus County?
Correct.
They alleviated that, and that's one that I have a problem with, because they are the ones that paid for these books, and so to me, it should be any taxpayer, I mean, to file a petition.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, if they found something in the school system, say it's a grandparent, or, and they wouldn't have a child maybe in the system. It could be a grandparent, or it could be someone else, but they pay taxes, they paid for those books, and that's where I have a problem, possibly with that. If they are taxpayer of Cabarrus County, that's, I think it should be anybody that's a taxpayer of Cabarrus County, and I had mentioned that earlier. And that's the only thing, you addressed my other problem that I'd had, and I think that's addressed with it, and with what Laura said, and I had mentioned that when I was on the committee. If it was in one, I think all the systems that have that book should be notified that that book has been called to the attention, and those schools, the other schools should be notified that they've got that, that book, and they should be notified to remove that book. And I think there should be something in this policy that says, hey, that's been notified, and you should let them know that. So that, those are the areas that I think should be addressed with this, and I don't know if it was addressed in the committee, since I have been removed from that, I don't know if that was addressed. Can you tell me if they addressed that?
Yes, ma'am.
In that committee?
Yes, ma'am.
Since I'm no longer on the committee?
Yes, ma'am. Now, if you can scroll to B, subsection B, you go, we're going up...
B, I'm on that one.
Okay, if you go to the last sentence?
Okay.
Well, the last two sentences, the third line, "Upon receipt of a request for reconsideration, the principal will notify the superintendent or superintendent's designee. The superintendent and/or designee will notify the principals of other schools in the district regarding the materials under review." So they will be notified that this book is being reconsidered at this particular school.
So they could do something then, right?
It addresses, so the principals know this book is being reconsidered in another school, yes, ma'am. But it is not being challenged in that school, or it's not being reviewed in the other schools.
So they could do something, but it's not saying they have to do something, is that correct?
Yes, when you say they, I would say, the principal would know it. The principal is an employee, so the principal could do something if he or she believed they needed to act on it. Yes, ma'am.
But they are notified that that book is on, on...
Yes.
That tells them that that book has been put on notice, in other words, so...
It's under review.
It is, it is done at that point.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Furr, would you like to make?
Yeah, I just want to make something clear, I think, that the superintendent can remove this book at any time.
Yes, sir.
And that's where I got my confidence.
Yes, sir.
That we will do the right thing. So I just want to make sure that, like, if a school's notified, he can go ahead and take care of that. So that needs to be. And the thing that worries me, Ms. Carpenter, about anybody could pull a book, do you remember Senior Project? I went and judged a Senior Project one time, and no disrespect to people, I mean, there was a lot of, what do you call these people? Homemakers or retired individuals that just picked those poor students to death. I mean, they look, they look forward to being involved in something. And I'm afraid if we let everybody in Cabarrus County try to take a book out of the library, we're going to have a lot of issues. So, anyway, that's just my two cents worth.
Thank you. Ms. Adcock?
Yes, I'd just first like to thank the committee members and Mr. White, just for their continued due diligence on this. I mean, it has been, changed this, changed that. We really had some good conversation, and I felt like we came to a place where we could all meet in the middle. I do believe that this policy has power behind it. It gives the people that are in charge of the schools, as well as our superintendent, the authority to make the best decisions for our students. And again, I feel the same way that Mr. Furr does. If we open this up to any person in Cabarrus County, then they can come in here, and if they just don't like something, they don't have any reason to, and just start pulling books out of our libraries.
Thank you. And Ms. Carpenter, just to kind of add to that, you know, if it's anonymous, you know, literally, somebody could submit 15 requests in different, without it being called out, and not really knowing who is behind it, what's going on, there could just be a lot of stuff that goes on with that. So that was one of the discussions we made, that some of the other school districts have dealt with that, that had anonymous, you know, requisition. It's just not a good opportunity for us to get those principals out there and into that kind of, you know, cumbersome task.
Well, we're not doing anonymous, though, I noticed that. And I definitely agree with not making anonymous.
Okay, good, I wasn't sure, okay, great, good.
I don't want it that way, definitely.
Good, okay. Ms. Sandage, anything else?
So my questions were answered, but I also just want to echo Board Member Adcock, just thank you guys for your time and energy. I understand this take, this took a long time. I'm okay with approving this now, and, you know, being done with it at this point, yeah. You guys did a great job, and I appreciate your time, I just want to make that clear.
3,200.
Do you want me to do, amend, add them together?
That's what I would say, if we can amend the agenda to add 3,200, which we have, which we, there has been, nobody's had any objections to 3,200.
Have there been any changes to 3,200?
Sir?
Have there been any changes to that?
The only one change is the reference that Mrs. Carpenter made about the American Library Bill of Rights, whether that is actually a law that we have to follow or not. It is not, so that was removed.
Okay, may I have a motion that we amend the agenda to add approval for Policy Number 3,200?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sandage, a second by Ms. Adcock. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Mr. Walter, was that you? Okay. Mr. Walter is a no.
Was that no for 3,200?
Yes.
No.
So we have Mr. Walter and Ms. Blackwell as a no. All right, may I have a motion that Policy 3210, no, excuse me, Policy 3,200 be approved as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion by Ms. Adcock.
Second.
Second by Ms. Sandage. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
No.
Mr. Walter and Ms. Blackwell are no's. May I have a motion that Policy 3210 be adopted as presented?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sandage, a second by Ms. Adcock. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
I have Mr. Walter and Ms. Blackwell as no's. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. White. Moving to 9.04, A133-2019, Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment Building Package. We'll have Mr. Brian Cohn.
It's me. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Cabarrus County Schools Department of the Construction has received the Building Construction Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment for the R. Brown McCaughster Elementary School project. As it was discussed at the July 13 meeting with the approval of the A133 standard form As it was discussed at the July thirteenth meeting with the approval of the A one thirty-three standard form of agreement between owner and constructor, this agreement would be amended twice. What we're bringing before you tonight is the second amendment of that agreement. We are requesting approval of the A one thirty-three twenty nineteen GMP amendment in the amount of twenty-four million, two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars. This will allow the construction manager at risk to begin obtaining the necessary building permits to begin building construction. To summarize the two GMP amendments on this project, the Early Site Package Amendment was approved by this board at the July thirteenth meeting in the amount of sixteen million, eight hundred and fifty-three thousand, and eighteen dollars. This, coupled with the amendment number two, brings the total project guarantee maximum price to forty-one million, one hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars. You will see on your screen the requested approval of the twenty-four million, two ninety-nine, three sixty-three. It inadvertently got left off of your paper copies. And I'll be happy to try and answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Comments or questions, and I'll begin with Ms. Adcock.
I don't have any comments or questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Carpenter.
Do you value, and this may be kind of a weird question, but do you value engineer this even though it's, you know, kind of a different type thing?
We do, yes, ma'am. We actually have, in your package, you'll see there's a list of about sixty value engineering items that we're working through with the contractor and the trade groups.
Well, I looked through there, and it looked like that was value engineering, but I knew this was kind of a different type thing. And it looked like that's what it was, but that's why I was checking with you. And so that's, that was my question. So that was value engineering, okay. All right, thanks a lot.
Ms. Blackwell.
No questions, thank you, Brian.
Mr. Fur?
No questions.
Mr. Walter?
Any surprises?
No, we came in under what our pre-construction estimates were identified throughout the process, you know, over the last seven months. And we worked closely with the deputy county manager and the finance director of the county, making sure we were appropriately funded for the project.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Sandich.
Not a one.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, will you state that amount again?
Yeah, so, so we're asking for the approval of the A one thirty-three twenty nineteen GMP amendment in the amount of twenty-four million, two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars.
Okay, great. All right. Verbiage read, may I have a motion?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Walter, a second by Ms. Blackwell. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Now we will move to nine point zero five, the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three School Improvement Plans. Mr. Matthew Phail.
Good evening, everyone. Each school's school improvement team has worked diligently to develop a school improvement plan, utilizing research-based strategies to improve student learning and well-being. These plans have been voted on and approved by each of the school's instructional staff. You've had the opportunity to review these plans, and tonight, we're asking that the board approve them. Do you have any questions?
Okay, I'll open up the floor for discussion again. I'll begin with Ms. Sandich.
I didn't have any questions. Thanks, everybody who contributed and helped out in the process.
Thank you.
Mr. Walter.
So you as cabinet review these individually as well?
Yeah, and superintendent very specifically.
Do you compare them on the plans that were done before, or is this an add, does this add on to the previous plan? Does this add on to the previous plan, or is this a completely?
It's a combination of the two. So there's a list of indicators that schools have to evaluate, and each year, they may continue to work on a specific indicator that they maybe not have achieved the level that they want to achieve. And then some years, they may have either reached that level of achievement, or a different priority rises, so they can switch. So it is a mixed bag of both of those.
But it can be a multi-year plan, right?
Yes.
It's not, this is only, only one year, it goes, it continues.
Yeah, but I'm sorry, by law, the statute reads that every two years you have to do a school improvement plan. We are doing one every year. And to answer your question, so we, they are aligned to the five dimensions. Families and community, professional capacity, leadership capacity, instructional excellence, and alignment. And then the last one is families and community. The school improvement plans this year, all of our principals, all forty-five of our principals, at the end of September and early October, the first week in October, presented their school data plans. They presented them in front of Dr. Roth, Sarah Reeves, and the assistant superintendent in charge. It would have been Gordon Palmer, Anna Blessington, or Johanna Parker, and myself. And also the deputy superintendent, interim was John Legrand, was in on those as well. So they came in, they presented their data, the strengths, the weaknesses, the opportunities for growth. And we, they went back, and then they did the school improvement plans and submitted them to Matthew Phail, which had to be board-approved, again, according to statute. And we linked them together. Some of them are continuing some of the work that was done in the past, to your point. So some of it is continuous, so it is a little bit of a mixed bag. Our intention is to, now and in the future, to tie them to their data presentation so that they're using the data and using the evidence to drive the instruction, which is what the school improvement plan calls for.
This year, we're going to have a strategic plan.
We, does it align with that next year? I wouldn't say it aligns a hundred percent across the board, but I would say that the six pillars that we've chosen to identify in the strategic plan align with the school improvement plans across the board in the district, yes. So, for example, student wellness is our first pillar in the strategic plan. Many of the school improvement plans talk about the student wellness and the mental health initiatives that they're doing, and they align them in the school improvement plan, which then aligns the data, which aligns to the strategic plan as well.
Yeah, well, I'm encouraged, encouraged to use the tool to get back to it, so that, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Fur?
No questions, and thank you.
Ms. Blackwell?
No questions. I know that this, there's a lot of work that goes into this, so thank you very much.
Ms. Carpenter.
I agree, and I looked through some of them, and very impressed with them. And I noticed in the learning loss that a lot of them said, yes, we're going to do at least five, but I noticed that a lot of them went way past that, and I was really encouraged by that. But all of them was at least at five, but a lot of work and time went into it. And again, very impressed by it, and thank you for all your hard work.
Ms. Adcock?
Um, yes, I'll just say that I looked over some of the plans myself, and I'm so impressed with the talented leaders we have in our schools to be able to do this. I mean, it takes leadership, and it takes leadership ability to be able to make a strategy that's going to have an outcome. And I could tell that they were well thought out, and that they looked at things that were very important to us as a board. So thank you for everyone that did their jobs on this.
Thank you. So may I have a motion that we approve the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three School Improvement Plans?
Removed.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Fur, a second by Ms. Blackwell. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Phail. Okay, we will move to items under number ten point zero one, which is our guest speakers addressing the board. It is now time for public comment. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak, and for an individual speaking, and an individual speaking for a group may be allowed up to five minutes at the discretion of the board chair. The speakers will be called in the order in which they were received. A person may not be substituted for a speaker, nor may one donate time to another speaker. If a speaker runs out of time, then the speaker may leave the additional information with the board clerk. If a speaker or attendee willfully interrupts, disturbs, or disrupts the meeting and refuses to leave after being asked by the board chair, then the speaker may be escorted out and could be arrested for trespassing or disrupting an official meeting. With that being said, I will begin with speaker number one, Reverend Jordan. And he must not be with us tonight, thank you. Speaker number two is Russell Wright.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'll start by saying thank you for passing policy thirty-two-ten as it stands. Good evening, my name is Russell Wright. I'm a parent to two CCS students and spouse to CCS alumna. I'd like to take a moment to address a couple of speakers from last month's meeting. Excuse me. First, to the person who probably isn't here, and who's probably watching, claimed I couldn't let Trump go when I brought up his first two books and the responses of the ghostwriters who wrote them for him. I'm going to say it's nice and slow. Ms. Blackwell brought it up in her podcast interview. That allows me to respond to what she said. If you want to see the sources cited for my speech, go to the Independent Tribune online. By the way, sources are things you look up and use to validate points in an argument or counterargument. You cite them so it doesn't look like you're presenting false information. Now, as for the individual who said that we were dealing with a battle between good and evil, no, it's not. It's not a battle between good and evil, or pornography and literature, or even life and death. It's a battle between politicians desiring power over the students of our county, most of whom are not old enough to vote, and individuals who want teachers, administrators, and media specialists to feel confident that they can do the job they've been hired to do without parents and/or CCS employees criticizing every move they make. I'm going to close this one quickly. Please make sure to flip your ballot over. Vote for those candidates who actually care about not only the students, but also the people who work with the students, and want them to do the job they were hired to do. My choices for that would be Pam Escobar, Brian Floyd, and Sam Treadaway. Hopefully, we'll be able to tell Ms. Laura Blackwell this.
Speaker number three, Jonathan Alman. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. How are y'all doing? As of ten twenty-two, we're still talking about COVID, sorry. As of ten twenty-two, the state of North Carolina of all ages has a ninety-nine point one-six-seven recovery rate. Kids zero to seventeen in North Carolina, ninety-nine point nine-nine-five. And Cabarrus County has a hundred percent recovery rate, what do you know? Cabarrus County was allotted seventy-one million in COVID funds. Cabarrus County has spent fifty million of that. I guess that might be a question for you, is what are we planning on spending the rest of that twenty-one million dollars on from COVID money? After closing schools, making kids wear masks for eight hours a day, facing quarantines of fourteen days at a time, and putting kids three to four years behind per NCDPI, the COVID vaccine gets added to the children's vaccine schedule since we are on, like, shot number five, and the last one was tested on eight mice. I would like for parents to know this. General Statute one thirty-eight dash one-five-seven, a religious exemption. If the bona fide religious belief of an adult or the parent, guardian, or person in loco parae, I can't say that, of a child are contrary to the immunizations required contained in this part, the adult and the child shall be exempt from the requirements. Everybody else can read the rest of it, but you don't have to give your kid anything you don't want to. Last night on social media, I saw that Randy Weingartner, AFT president, says she agrees with Professor Emily Oster, who has just written an article in The Atlantic titled, "Let's Declare Pandemic Amnesty: We Need to Forgive One Another For What We Did and Said When We Were in the Dark About COVID." Well, I think a lot of us really knew what was going on. Maybe one day I can forgive, but I know I will never forgive what has been done to our children. I know in one week, I won't forget who voted to wear a mask. I won't forget who is and who is not fighting for our kids. Parents, in one week, we can elect leaders who will do what is in the best interest of our kids versus continuing to follow the same folks who have gotten us where we are. I'm going to be voting for the family values trio of Ms. Blackwell, Sean Turner, and Melanie Freeman, so, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Alman. Speaker number four, Tiffany Fulton.
Good evening. Good evening, board, Madam Chair. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you. My name is Tiffany Fulton. I'm currently the Director of Youth and Family Ministries at my local church. I want to acknowledge that you have taken an arduous task upon yourself. By opening yourself to this capacity of servanthood, you are a lightning rod for unfair criticism and character attacks. That is a sacrifice you have made. I've never voted straight ticket in any election since I was first able to vote. The world is not and should not be only one side or the other, only red and only blue. I am compelled to share with you that I left my public school teaching career this summer, after eighteen years, and it was one of the most difficult decisions of my adult life. And with all respect, and I do mean that, the only thing that made my choice easy were actions of leadership in this district, and some of which came from this board. Teaching is my passion. I love eighteen years' worth of students, and I know some are listening now, and I miss you, and I believe in you, and I still expect you to respect without exception. And that's why I'm here, independent of tonight, which has gone much better. There has been pastimes where the respect towards each other and towards educators has been lacking and disheartening. We witnessed a historic exodus of qualified staff from our schools and away from our children, and I've seen folks work to alienate those passionate and hardworking staff members instead of rallying behind them. I don't see everyone trusting the degrees and the experience of these professionals. Instead, I've seen, and I have personally experienced witch hunts over personal Facebook posts, which are protected by the First Amendment, and nonsense about indoctrination. And that's the word that brings me here. Your positions, they are not partisan. They are not identified on the ballot as partisan. You are private people in the role of public servitude, and your political affiliations are clear in your words, your social media, and your interviews, your campaign signs. It undermines the critical importance of your work on this board. Your job is to hire, fire, and write policy. Those need to be executed without prejudice or bias. The purpose of public school is to foster and facilitate critical thinking. Not what to think, but how to think. It is done through equal access to myriad materials for all students, not just access to books that we like or history that makes us feel comfortable. Schools are shelters for bodies, not minds. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Speaker number five, and I know that is, I will let you state your name at the podium.
Hi, my name is Shaheer Liu. I am a student of Cabarrus County Schools, and today I would like to share some students' opinion regarding with the book review process currently forming in our counties. Students are the most impacted, yet we're not asked about opinions, so I stand here today hoping you will listen to our opinions. Starting, two weeks ago, we started a petition against book review in our county, varying from seventh to twelfth grade, and as of today, we have two hundred and nine signatures from students. We stated our trust in our county hiring professionals during their jobs. We are concerned because parents from before to now are able to censor information on their own child, so why are we advancing their power over other or our children, and now even taxpayers? And the lack of check and balance, the ability to just appeal to the board, then what's the purpose of the Literature Review Committee? The mo, the moment book banning starts, for even reasons of explicit content, media collections diversity will decrease. Diversity means there will be variety of beliefs, including certain, but not all beliefs, that you agree with. It is not a problem, nor does it need a solution. The beauty of literature lies in the variety of interpretations. And allowing flows of beliefs, voices, is the beauty of democracies. And I would like to share you guys some inputs from students. Books are the least of the issues at school that we see and learn from. In some instance, it is necessary for students to feel uncomfortable or offended by a book in order to have more understanding and learning experience. Restriction of knowledge is unsettling, and I, this is my favorite one. Looking for Alaska seems like a great book that can teach high schoolers about grief. Although it takes miles, a while to finally accept that Alaska is dying wasn't his fault, or her fault, or anyone's, he still did. The book isn't inappropriate for all high school students and should not be removed. It is a book with life lessons about grieving of those who we are loved and trying to cope in high school. The theme of the story is hope, and maybe is still today in some high school are going through tough times like myself. What I'm trying to say is, there are so many different interpretations of one literature, and it's so subjective. And we cannot just have a policy that is based on prejudice or subjective view for it to be objection. So I hope you would consider some comments from students, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Speaker number six, Greta Hatley. Ms. Hatley, you have five minutes.
My name is Greta Hatley, and I am a lifelong resident of Cabarrus County. I am a board member of PFLAG Concord Kannapolis, and I'm speaking for our chapter. PFLAG was founded in nineteen seventy-three and is the first and largest organization dedicated to supporting, educating, and advocating for LGBTQ people and their families. We have over three hundred and twenty-five thousand members and four hundred chapters nationwide. Our local chapter is, has a scholarship program. Supports, provides volunteers for Cabarrus Time Out Youth and LGBTQ Support Group for Teens. Our chapter provides resources and support for LGBTQ parents. We work to create a caring, just, and affirming world. We work to create a caring, just, and affirming world for all. According to the 2022 Annual Report from the Gay, Lesbian, and Straight Education Network, about 9% of high school students identify as LGBTQ. They are faced with hostility, bullying, victimization, and discrimination on a daily basis. As a result, many avoid participating in school activities. They miss school more often, and GPAs were lower than students that didn't report discrimination. Forty-five reported considering suicide in the last year. 80% of LGBTQ students felt unsafe at school. Only 12 felt that bullying would be addressed when it is reported. One-third of all books attempted to be banned in schools and public libraries are books with LGBTQ content. Locally, some students have reported an increase in bullying of LGBTQ students. Some teachers have been told to remove any pride symbols from their room. Some schools no longer have GSAs. How do we address this issue? Students need to feel accepted, included, and safe to thrive. In Cabarrus County School Policy 3000, in Goals and Objectives of Educational Program Number Six states, quote, "Foster respect and appreciation for cultural and ideological diversity and differences." In Policy 1100, Governing Principles also speaks to encouraging tolerance and respect and seek to eliminate or lessen other barriers that may impede a student's opportunity to learn. Academic Service Corps also speaks to educating the whole child. Caring and respectful relationships, integrity, and honesty. We need to put these words to work to ensure all students can feel safe and included at school and in their future. How do we welcome LGBTQ students in the schools? Symbols of inclusion, books that reflect a student's own experiences. An understanding teacher can make all the difference in the world. Gay-Straight Alliance Clubs in schools show acceptance. Rainbow flags show acceptance. Rainbow-themed safe school signs help students feel accepted. Learning about LGBTQ historical figures such as Alan Turing and James Baldwin helps with acceptance. We want all students to feel welcome in schools. Students that face difficult life experiences need to know others have experienced similar situations. We have a family in our chapter that has had to deal with the heartbreak of suicide. How do schools help students with such hard life experiences? Books like Looking for Alaska, which discusses teen suicide, can help students understand the complicated feelings that arise when a family or friend commits suicide. PFLAG National is an anti-bullying program called Cultivating Respect: Safe Schools for All. It gives information on ways to combat bullying, actual actions to teach students and staff empathy. The school's policy on bullying tells us that bullying is but doesn't provide any guidelines on how to prevent bullying. To start with, teachers need to have regular training to prevent harassment, bullying, and physical altercations. To keep our schools safe, our students need to feel safe and accepted. As I understand it, anti-bullying training is not an annual event. Providing anti-bullying literature for teachers can help. Training is not possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaker number seven, Ms. Hatley. Ms. Hatley. You can take it with you. Thank you. Speaker number seven, Lee Brown.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the school board. I echo the other speakers in thanking you for your service to the children of this county, but I am disappointed and dismayed that so much of this meeting and the public comment has zero to do with academic rigor, has very little to do with the results that our schools should be seeking in taking our children to the next level of their educational output. We spend so much time on issues, and we create more and more issues instead of focusing on the fact that our children are currently three years behind on their learning because of policies from this school board. Those of you that voted for masks, you are the reason our children are behind. When you voted for virtual school, you are the reason our children are behind, and it is highly disappointing to understand that you, who are working so hard to get yourselves elected from time to time, you understand that time is finite. You know this because you are one week from the general election, and I know that your calendars are full to the brim, and I'm grateful that you still showed up here on the dais to do the work. However, when we know that time is finite, I have to ask you why we spend so much time on foolish and earthly issues instead of getting our children elevated to the next level of academic rigor. The reason I am here today is as a parent of a high school or at Hickory Ridge High School. Another survey went out last week. The survey was put out by EOS Equal Opportunity Schools. I got the notice on Sunday night, and as a good mom does, I started doing the research on who Equal Opportunity Schools is. It happens to be a nonprofit that per their mission statement says they are strengthening educator and system leader capacity to break down barriers to increase access, belonging, and success in rigorous college and career prep, secondary school courses, for students of color and low-income students so that they may thrive in their post-secondary pursuits and life goals. When are we going to have policies that want all children to succeed? Adding racial division amongst our kids is foolish. Adding socioeconomic division goes nowhere. Our children are being taught to see each other as immutable characteristics instead of the unique and wonderfully created children of God that each of them is. When I called to ask questions about this program and about this nonprofit, I wanted to know what was spent on this survey. I was grateful to find that nothing was spent. However, I am dismayed to learn that the data that was accepted on my child is being sent to a nonprofit. Why are parents having the children used as lab rats? This is happening over and over. It happened in that mental wellness survey that you did not provide and opt out on for parents. And you can tell me all day long that you're looking to find the child who is a problem. You really think a disturbed child is going to answer that survey like you want them to? I am asking that you focus on our children and that you stop all the distractions and bring them to a new level of academic rigor that suits each child in the way that they are uniquely created. And for the record, post-secondary education is not for every child, and we need to stop acting like they all belong in school. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number eight, Pam Escobar.
Good evening. I'm Pam Escobar. I'm a mama bear. I have two daughters in Cabarrus County Schools. Today in Mexico, we celebrate the Day of the Dead, and while we don't all celebrate this day, it reminds me how all of us have loved ones who we miss, and I want to focus on what we have in common. As a school board candidate, I have been at the early voting polls and spoken with so many of the other candidates and their volunteers, and one volunteer for another candidate told me how she misses her mom. She saw a mother and daughter voting, and afterwards they kissed getting into their cars, and that gesture struck her. See, we all share a common human experience of loving others. We also spoke about books. She told me about an experience with her daughter's English class and communicating with her teacher. Now, while we didn't agree on the concern she had about that book, I did tell her I would stand up for her to get an answer. See, there will be people that vote for me and people who don't vote for me. Regardless, their concerns should be addressed, even if we don't share the same concerns. As for the policy regarding the books, thank you for passing it because it's fair. Concerns will be addressed, and that's what matters. Some other concerns I'm hearing from people? Substitute teachers. We need them. There are not enough, and teachers and other staff are scrambling. One counselor described it as crisis mode. Instead of doing the interventions or the work they need to be doing, they are filling in for substitutes. And then there's the bus driver shortage. Parents who send their kids from my neighborhood to Winkler Middle School tell me their kids are on a first-name basis with the school front office staff because they're late so often. My question is, when does it become an emergency? When do we say we need help from the state or from the National Guard? What is the tipping point? Because many are saying it feels like we're past that tipping point. I want to commend the superintendent because it appears he wants to tackle our concerns and wants our schools to be the best they can be, and I think he needs a new school board to get him there. We'll see what the voters say, and that's what's amazing about democracy. We can disagree without being disagreeable. We can vote. Right now, there is another meeting happening at the Board of Elections about a school board candidate's volunteer and her treatment of others at the polls. No one should be intimidated when they vote, and no volunteer should be threatened. As human beings, I think we can agree to that. I hope we can. I believe in the freedom of religion, and that means while I pray, I don't want prayer to be in public schools. But in this past Sunday at church, I prayed for all of you, that our elected officials work for common good and not for personal gain. Whatever happens on Tuesday, November 8th, I will continue to pray for you because we need to move our schools forward. We have to work together, and we all have to focus on what we have in common, our kids. I'm Pam Escobar. I'm a mama bear for yours and mine.
Okay, board members, that concludes the guest speakers, and we've had a board member that asked for a point of privilege to speak, but I would also just like to open it up to all the board members. If there's anything that you'd like to speak on, make a comment. I'm going to open the floor, and I'm going to start with Ms. Adcock.
I don't have anything to say other than it's 7:40 and we're almost done.
Ms. Carpenter.
Well, I just want to thank everybody for being here. It's been a kind of a tense night, and I just want to thank everybody that has come out to vote. This is a very important board to me and has always been, and I think that's why I have served for 16 years, and I take pride in it. And I can assure you that books that shouldn't be in children's hands, that has always been a top priority, and it's a top priority for everybody that's on this board. And I think that's why we've worked so hard on this policy we just approved, and I want to thank that literacy board that did work very hard. Maybe it's not perfect, but I think that the committee that worked on it, I want to thank everybody that did work on it. And again, it's not perfect, but again, I want to thank you. And we all have worked very, all of us worked very hard, and we try to work together on it, and there's no sense to fight and argue because that doesn't get you anywhere. And I can just tell you, this election has been very, it's one of the worst I've ever seen, and everybody arguing or not telling the truth and all this stuff, that doesn't get anybody anything. And I just want to thank everybody that's gotten out and voted, and just want to say thank you. And thank you for the board, and thank you, Ms. Grimsley, for everything you've done, and we really do appreciate it, and you've done an outstanding job, and I just want to thank you for that.
Well, thank you, Ms. Carpenter. I appreciate that. Ms. Blackwell.
So I'll just say, you know, to Carolyn's point, this election has been extremely difficult, I think, on all of us. I've been at the polls every day, listening to the voters that are out there. Just really encourage everybody, please, there are people that have fought and died for this right for us to vote. Please make your voices heard. Please go out and vote either early voting or go November the 8th and make your voices heard here in Cabarrus County. Thanks.
Mr. Furr.
I'd also like to thank Ms. Grimsley for the job she's done in the last two years. It's been, you know, we've been through a lot, and we've got a lot accomplished, and it's been some tough times, and this is my third term, and so I've sat under quite a few board chairs, and I can tell you folks that nobody works as hard as she does. You know, I tell her all the time, she probably puts too much time in it, so whoever the next person is that takes this job is, you've got some tough shoes to fill, but, and, you know, next month, there's going to be new people setting up here. I mean, the people will, you know, they'll, all the things we've been discussing for the last two years, masks, going back to school, the people will speak next week. We'll know, we'll know what the heartbeat of this county, it'll reflect in the election. So that's what the election's for, and whatever happens, I've enjoyed working with all of you. And this one might be funny, but I think we need to start charging people running for office for TV time.
Mr. Walter.
Well, I echo that elections are important. We have 11 candidates that want to be on this board, so our community can only pick three of them. They're good people, but please take the time to learn about these candidates, what they believe in before you go to vote if you haven't already. And I also like to say thank you, Ms. Grimsley, your passion and leading and support, and we appreciate that. And then lastly, is we do focus on the important stuff, too. We just approved 44 school improvement plans, and that's exactly what our speaker was talking about, is how do we move our kids and improve our kids and their outcomes.
Ms. Sandage.
I've said this before, you know, when I was out there as a citizen and not a board member or elected official, you know, I saw things very differently from how they really are in this seat. You know, I would urge anybody who questions how hard it is to be sitting up here and receiving all of this feedback and most times not able to even defend ourselves. You know, it's really very hard and trying, and, you know, I say, if you really and truly want to make a difference, run for office. I got tired of not, my voice not being heard, so I took the next step and I ran for office. And I'll just tell you, it's not easy. And for the student who spoke today, I do not want to mispronounce your name. I truly graciously appreciate students speaking up because everybody up here signed up to work for students. Y'all voices matter. Y'all need to continue to use your voices, and I hope many of you are encouraged by getting involved and by being a part of what systems are not allowing you to use your voices. So thank you so very much, and I welcome all of these students anytime. Call me, email me. I want to be a part of changing what you guys want to see happen in your schools. So thank you very much for bringing that to our attention.
Ms. McLean, would you like an opportunity?
Just making sure. Thank you. Well, thank you, guys. I appreciate the comments, and I will definitely echo Ms. Sandage and her points. There is probably nothing harder than being on a school board, and you do not know that until you're here. I've spent 12 years, five years as board chair. It is a tough place to be. This board's probably going to take some different direction starting in December, which that meeting is on December the 5th. For the viewing audience, the new members will be sworn in, and the members or member, for sure, going out will be recognized. You know, it's been a pleasure. It has been the hardest two years. I was first elected in 2004, ended my first, well, my second term in 2012, reelected in 2018, now coming off. These last two years have been harder than any and all of those years put together. I've worked with so many board members, so many staff I've worked under, with, three, actually four superintendents. Dr. Kapiki, my hat is off to you. You do a fabulous job coming in here and doing what you've done, and I appreciate the relationship as well. The advice I would give you is, this is a tough job. Do your job. People out in the community, they have opinions, and they should. They have children that they are very protective of, be it a candidate, be it a parent, be it a teacher, whomever. We are protective of children. Do your job. It's hard, you know, it's really hard. Y'all take 100 phone calls and get criticized for not answering one. We answer 500 emails and get criticized for not answering two. It's always going to be that way. Do your job. That's what you're elected to do, and as long as you do it, that's all we ask, okay? If you need me, you know where I am. I told Dr. Kapiki I was changing my phone number, so, but thank you. It's been a pleasure working with each of you, the staff. I can't say enough about the staff that have come in to some really hard changes, and I appreciate all of your relationships and partnerships as well. So with that, I would ask for a motion that the board convene in closed session to consult with an attorney and preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute 143-31811A3, and to consider confidential personnel matters pursuant to General Statute 143-31811A6.
So move. I have a motion by Ms. Adcock, a second by Mr. Furr. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. With that, we will say goodnight to our viewing audience, and the next scheduled meeting is December the 5th at 6:00 PM. Thank you and goodnight. Thank you and goodnight.